I apologize for the slight delay there, everybody. Welcome to the Northern School Committee meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now that we've got the meeting started, we're going to immediately go into a recess for the purposes of some recognition. So forgive us, but we will be going to a short recess.
In the auditorium.
In the auditorium.
For student presentations.
For the purposes of student presentations, we will see you all shortly. So, very quickly, I want to say before you step down, so I met Ms. Murphy tonight for the first time. And I was really excited to do that. And I mentioned to her, I was hoping to meet her because, as you mentioned, my daughter Malia was right over there. Hey, Malia? She's in the robotics school.
Great, I love you!
And she has spoken so highly of the influence you have in our life, the effort you put into getting these kids and teaching them and introducing them to a subject which they, frankly, a lot of them may know nothing about, particularly females. But in any case, I want to thank you for the absolutely phenomenal, wonderful, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Denise, can I just pipe in too? I just want to say, I remember when you were hired. And one of the first times I met you, we were at the high school and you were talking about all you wanted to do for the program. And we were so excited to welcome you and really see what you were going to do. Never in my mildest dreams did I think in three years you would be, you have taken our schools to where they are now. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you so much, guys. Congratulations.
That's one of our things to get support in this town. Thank you so much.
I think it's always important to get in with the robot people because when there's a robot on my eyes over, you know. No, I know, Carrie Murphy, I'm cool.
Carrie, if you can help us, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Sorry.
Minutes?
Yeah, please. Next up, we have the votes reported minutes of the May 27th, 2021 opening meeting. Has everybody had a chance to vote?
Yes.
Any corrections? There is one correction. The correction is, oh, my God, okay. So we corrected it to be, we corrected to note that Catherine was not there for that meeting, I think.
No, I understand.
No, the minute, the minute, the minutes applied for.
That's right, notes it at the bottom of the first meeting.
Yeah, so we, that the minute approval is a five to nothing motion carries, it should only be a four to nothing motion carries. She actually would not be able to vote on that.
For the grievance.
Yes, the minutes, the minutes that, that you asked, you weren't here for the meeting of the minutes.
The meeting before.
Yeah, they put a five to nothing, it should be a four to nothing.
Yes, yes, yes.
So if nobody else has any changes outside of that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I would just like to thank whoever did the notes that suggest to say that they kept my, about the 97 essays very concise and I appreciate that.
Second, second. Okay, all those in favor? And we are going to have to go back to roll home. So I think we were going to adjourn now, but we've been told we have to. So Mrs. Cermey?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
She?
Yes.
Five zero was the change. All right. Next up, we have the warrants.
I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrants, June 3rd, 2021, $398,586.14. School payroll warrants, June 3rd, 2021, $1,139,997.22. I would enter them into public record.
Council? Okay. Next up, we have the student representative update. Zoe Duran is either at an AP test or studying for an AP test, so she is not here. Malia is coming to us remotely tonight. Malia, take a break.
Hi, so you'll notice I'm actually not in my room. I'm actually at the high school right now because I'm going to show you guys something cool. I'm going to fly through really quickly the other school updates about what they're doing. You'll hear a band in the background, I'm sorry. So LGN has field day, grade three picnic, spirit week. Yale has field day, fifth grade celebration. And a lot of the students, we asked them what their favorite part of the year was. So a lot of that was in-person, their teachers, specials, new friends, meeting new friends from the DCS or the LGN sides, mask breaks, outside reading, PJs, podcasts, science, and back to normal. GCS, their highlights were special snacks, new friends, writers workshop, their teachers, field day, the playground, STEM, helping people, and coming back to school full-time. And lastly, for NMS, spirit week, they have lots of sports wins going on. The future of their softball team is supposed to be very bright. They're going to have a guest speaker and they're going to have a LANZO luau. So I'm actually at the high school right now because I'm at the music department's coffee house, which is a super fun way, sorry, I'm like walking, but a super fun way for the music department to show their students off. And I'm actually going to show you guys if that's okay? Have everyone say hi real quick? And then that'll be it for me, but I'm walking over there right now. So, yes, so Zoe couldn't be here tonight, but, yeah.
Just that you know, as Malia is walking over, I received, these two ladies, I just saw, I get this thorough email from Zoe. Of course, I said, I understand academics first. You know, thank you for your service this year. Can't wait to see you again next year.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Zoe, for communicating.
Yeah. Perfect.
Happy to have you.
And I, and I.
So that's our coffee house. So that's why I'm walking around, sorry, I'm also part of the coffee house. But, yeah, that's, I think that's pretty much it for me. I hope you guys have a great summer. You deserve it off.
You too. Thanks, Malia.
Thank you.
Bye.
And thank you very much.
So, that's our coffee house. So that's why I'm walking around, sorry, I'm also part of the coffee house. But, yeah, that's, I think that's pretty much it for me. I hope you guys have a great summer. You deserve it off.
You too. Thanks, Malia.
Thank you. And thank you very much. So, and kind of, like you were saying about their professionalism very good. I really, and I, I told my wife, I'm struggling to say this without nepotistic or anything like that because Malia is obviously my daughter. And Zoe is currently the family as well, so. But I have to say, I really enjoyed the way that they've done it this year. I like it. I'm a big fan of the twist to it. It's not just simply fingers what happened. It's more of a sense of what the mood is in each school. I really like that.
I agree, yeah, I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you and I have been at this quite a while. And we've had some good reps over the years. Not to speak down by any words on them, but this is one of the better crew that I've seen. But I would like to see, I know there's been a couple of weeks where they said they didn't hear back from one of the administrators. So I think we need to, you'll send a gentle reminder that, you know, these are, these are another advocate for your schools to talk to us. So I think the administrators need to just, a friendly gentle reminder that if you have something that your students bring to you, by all means, this is an avenue for them to come in and talk.
Right.
Yeah, I think that'll, that'll be nice. I mean, I think this year, I think we've kind of given a little bit of a pass just because of what the administrators have gone through with COVID. But I agree, I mean, I think the way that they, I think everything has evolved, right? Every year, every student reps that we've had, it's just kind of gotten better and better over the years.
Second. Second. Okay, all those in favor? And we are going to have to go back to roll call once I think we were going to adjourn now, but we've been told we have to. So, uh, Mrs. Stern.
Yes.
Gallagher.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Shee.
Yes.
And Sabas is yes. But, um, five zero was a change.
Five zero. All right. Uh, next up, we have the warrants.
I have reviewed and approved the following warrants. School expense warrants, June 3rd, 2021, $398,586.14. School payroll warrants, June 3rd, 2021, uh, $1,130,997.22. I would enter them into public record.
Counsel. Okay. Uh, next up, we have the student representative update. Uh, Zoe Durant is either at a, um, an AP test or studying for an AP test, so she is not here.
Correct.
Uh, Malia is coming to us remotely tonight. Uh, Malia, take a break.
Hi, so you'll notice I'm actually not in my room. I'm actually at the high school right now because I'm going to show you guys something cool. Um, I'm going to fly through really quickly the other school updates about what they're doing. You'll hear a band in the background, I'm sorry. Um, so LGN has field day, grade three picnic, spirit week. Uh, Y'all has field day, fifth grade celebration. And a lot of the students, we asked them what their favorite part of the year was. So a lot of that was in person, their teachers, specials, um, new friends, meeting new friends from the DCS or the LGN sides. Uh, mask breaks, outside reading, PJs, podcasts, science, and back to normal. Um, GCS, their highlights were special snacks, new friends, uh, writers workshop, their teachers, field day, the playground, um, STEM, helping people and coming back to school full-time. And lastly, for NMS, uh, spirit week, they have lots of sports wins going on. Um, the future of their softball team is supposed to be very bright. Um, they're going to have a guest speaker and they're going to have a Lancer Luau. So I'm actually at the high school right now because I'm at the music department's coffee house, which is a super fun way, sorry, I'm like walking, but, um, super fun way for the music department to, you know, show their students off. And I'm actually going to show you guys if that's okay and have everyone say hi real quick. And then that'll be it for me, but I'm walking over there right now. So, yes, so Zoe couldn't be here tonight, but, um, yeah.
Just that you know, as Malia is just walking over, I received, these two ladies, I just saw, I get this thorough email from Zoe, of course, I said, I understand academics first, you know, thank you for your service this year. Can't wait to see you again next year.
Thank you.
Well, well, thank you, Zoe, for communicating.
Yeah. We'll continue to continue.
Perfect.
Happy to have you.
So that's our coffee house. So that's why I'm walking around, sorry, I'm also part of the coffee house. But, yeah, that's, I think that's pretty much it for me. Um, I hope you guys have a great summer. You deserve it off.
You too. Thanks, Malia.
Thanks, Malia.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. So, um, and kind of, uh, like you were saying about the, the very professional, very good. I, I really, and, and I, I told my wife, I, I'm struggling to say this without nepotistic or anything like that because Malia is obviously my daughter, um, and, and Zoe is, is currently the family as well, so. But I, I have to say, I really enjoyed the way that they've done this year.
Absolutely.
I like it. I'm a big fan of, of the, the twist to it. It's not just simply fingers what happened. It's more of a sense of what the, what the mood is in each school and I really like that.
I agree, yeah, I absolutely agree.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, we, you and I have been at this quite a while and we've had some good reps over the years, uh, not to speak down by any words on them, but this is one of the better crew that I've seen. Um, but I would like to see, I know there's been a couple of weeks where they said they didn't hear back from one of the administrators. So I think we need to, you'll send a gentle reminder that, you know, these are, these are another advocate for your schools to, to talk to us. So I think the administrators need to just, a friendly gentle reminder that if you have something that your students bring to you, by all means, this is an avenue for them to, to come in and talk.
Right.
Yeah, I think that'll, that'll be nice. I mean, I think this year, I think we've kind of given a little bit of a pass just because of what the administrators have gone through with COVID. But I agree, I mean, I think the way that they, I think everything has evolved, right? Every year, every, um, student reps that we've had, it's just kind of gotten better and better over the years since I've been here. Um, it's nice to see.
Good.
Yeah, I'm glad they'll be back.
Anybody else? Okay, uh, next up, we're going to go to review and vote on the student handbook changes.
So, um, Mr. Dollman is here. There he is. Uh, Principal Dollman, um, will be bringing you up to date on one area of the dress code that we wanted to get it out, wanted to get out before we close out for the school year and that is dress code. Mr. Doll.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on, uh, the document that, uh, was presented to school committee here as far as where it came from and the process that went into sort of arriving at it. Um, it began really with a conference between, uh, the middle school and the high school administrators, sort of taking a look at our current policy. Uh, at that point in time, we actually took a look at dress codes, um, that were, uh, in the Tri Valley League is our peer schools. Um, that's, I know, 11 other schools. Um, we also took a look at some, uh, sort of national examples as well, um, to take a look at it. Uh, most notably, I think, from, uh, Seattle Public Schools and a few others. Um, and some of the things that we really sort of wanted to get across with our, our dress code here, um, had to do with bringing it back to our school's mission, um, as well as the portrait of a Norton graduate and thinking about decisions that students make when they're in the school and, and when they're coming into school, um, that they have the right to express themselves, but they also want to be thinking about it in terms of the purposes for which they're dressing. Um, we also circulated surveys, um, to both faculties at the middle school and the high school, um, particularly on kind of hot button issues such as the wearing of hats, hoods, um, things like that that were, uh, restricted in the previous, um, draft of the, or the previous policy of, uh, the dress code. Um, the other things that we sort of were interested in is taking a look at this with a little bit of a critical eye to make sure that it was as inclusive as possible and that the language of the policy did not sort of target any group, gender, or anything like that. Um, so we wanted to make it as inclusive as possible. And that was really the thing that we, uh, were our driving sort of forces with this. Um, we also circulated it to a few different student groups at the high school, um, to get their sort of take on that, uh, sort of inclusiveness, um, as well as obviously through our site councils, um, which have student representatives as well. So we tried to get, uh, quite a bit of input on this as possible. Um, and as you can see, uh, sort of taking a look at it, we start off with affirming those values. And then we talk about sort of the, the things that we might have to restrict in order to make sure that our building, um, is safe and healthy, um, and that there are no disruptions to the educational process. And we sort of outline those things, um, as far as what is sort of barred, um, as far as, uh, the attire that could infringe upon, um, the education of others. Um, and then we do, I come back to this, uh, based on, um, some of the other sort of survey results, uh, what we're thinking of as far as things that would now be, um, sort of allowed in schools such as hats, um, certainly hoodies. Uh, we had a lot of discussion about, uh, whether or not hoods could be worn up, um, and just ultimately determined that we want them to, uh, remain down. Um, and then finally, uh, the thing that we put in here is that we also wanted to affirm teachers' ability to restrict, uh, the different things in their classrooms that are specific to their classroom, um, and sort of make sure that, uh, that teachers have the ability and were supported by this policy. Um, if for a instructional or safety, uh, reason, um, they wanted to prohibit the wearing of certain attire in their classroom. And sort of that kind of encapsulates the whole, uh, policy there as far as our process and some of the things that we wanted to, uh, make sure we highlighted within it.
Okay, um, before I open it up for comments from the school committee, I, I do want to say to, uh, the audience who's, uh, joining us via Zoom, this, this was a, a topic that we had received some correspondence about in the past. So, um, I, if, if there's anybody who is, is joining us via Zoom that you have any comments or questions, uh, if you would put those in the chat, please, we'll be able to refer those and see those. So, um, start doing that if you do, and I'm going to open it up to comments from school committee now. Anyway.
So this will go across the two schools, this is. Right, yeah, that, those are the recommend, that the recommendation from the administration to my office to you tonight is to, to take this new dress code, um, process, if you will, and put it into our student handbooks for next year. We'll collect data throughout the year. Usually when we change something, that's what we try to do, see if there's any hiccups. But, you know, I think Dennis spoke, uh, very clearly that, you know, this was a, very much a driven, uh, student and parent issue that's come up. Um, you'll see that the, that instead of talking about types of clothing, uh, we've eliminated because only really certain groups of people wear certain clothings, you know? And so if anything, what this does is also really supports, um, one of the things I wouldn't know for, that's our LGBTQ community and our transgender community, um, and allows for, um, students to, to make good decisions and that's what we want them to do. It also still allows for us to concentrate on issues of safety, i.e. in some of our tech areas where students are utilizing saws and cutting things that, you know, having certain clothes in that type of situation may not work. Just like in a lab, you have to make sure you have goggles, that's another area. Um, and then, uh, I think the last part is that, um, we're trying to clearly articulate to students some choice. That's, that's true, we're, we're giving that, some of that up, if you will. But I also think we're trying to make sure that students understand that there's the, there's right places for things to take place. And I think that's, that speaks to, to that here. So I'm, I'm supporting it, um, want to collect some data on it. Um, I think it, it will lead to some further discussions, um, but I don't think that people can say some of the things and accusations, if you will, about, you know, well, you're targeted because I wear that. This is more about making good decisions.
So, and, and I, I will say, um, you know, I, I think, I, I think this makes more sense than the, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this. I, I like the idea, like you said, kind of, hey, listen, we're going to three-leg run-ups. We expect to make more decisions, um, if, if you don't, then, you know, then we don't treat you like grumps anymore. Uh, all, all that being said, I do want to say that on, on this policy and on any of our policies, really, uh, they're all, they're all always works in progress. They're always, uh, you know, they're always open to, to change. If there is, if there's something wrong with it, I think is, is, you know, Mr. Shee said earlier, we've been doing this for a while. Um, and we've always listened to people. If there's been a complaint, if there's been an issue, uh, we're certainly willing to listen. Doesn't mean we necessarily always agree, but, but we're going to listen to you. Um, and in this case, I think we listen to them. I like the revision, I like the way it's written out, um, so I'm, I'm for it as well.
Yeah.
Good. Does require a vote of the school committee.
Okay, any other comments or? Janet, are there any comments or?
There are no comments or questions.
No comments or questions, okay. Um, okay, uh, with all that said, then I would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, changes in language to the, um, student handbooks.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay, uh, all those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Shee?
Yes.
Shee, sorry. And Sabas, yes.
All right.
Uh, next up, we have the vote to approve the administrative assistance contract memorandum agreement for 2021, 2022.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, before you tonight, you have a copy of the one-year tentative agreement beginning on the, uh, July 1st of this year and then June 30th, '22. Um, it's a, it's a salary scale adjustment, um, for that unit. Um, to be quite honest, as you see, it has the senior administrative assistant, um, steps one through 10, 15, and 16. The administrative assistant, one through 10, 15, and 16. And then guidance administrative assistant as well as, um, from one through 10 and then 15 and 16. The way that works so that the committee's clear is once you get to step 10, you're going to sit there for, for five years before you get to 15. So you're only getting your colleague, you're not getting that as well. When we looked at this, our goal here was to try to make ourselves more competitive. Um, this just still doesn't get us to the, to the top in any way, shape, or form, but it does absolutely, uh, make us more competitive and also, um, allows for people to want to stay, uh, within this. And it does fit within our budget proposal, Matt's here tonight, but it does fit within our budget proposal that you approved. So I recommend that you approve it. The union has voted it and accepted it, um, before today.
Any comments or questions on this? How many members in this unit?
Uh, this is a small unit, so this would be three, four, five, uh, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 members, if I'm correct. I think it's 10 members off the top of my head. I believe it's 10, so it's a small, it's a small group. Um, and they're an association, which is a little different from a union. They don't take out dues and stuff, but they bargain together and have stuff, and so great, great work to work with.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve the administrative assistance contract memorandum of agreement for 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Shee?
Yes.
And the? Yes. Uh, next up.
I've extended it on your behalf.
Excellent. Next up, we have the vote to approve the superintendent's contract for 2021, 2022.
That's on you.
I was going to say, huh?
All right, then. It's the second year of a, of a, it's the second year of a six-year. It's the second year of a, it's the beginning of a second, second year of a six-year contract.
And I believe there's, this is, we revised this out.
Correct.
Okay, so, um, you, you all want a chance to take, take a look at this. So we're revising the salary to $213,557 for, uh, July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2021. Does anybody have any question on?
Beetle, 2022.
Sorry, 22.
Yeah, 2022, sorry.
Yep. With the revision I just made.
Any questions or comments?
There was every year, Joe. This was a, I, I wish that.
Jeez, we lowball.
Honestly, I wish that we could do more. Um, you know, I know that we've said this to you many a times and privately and publicly, but honestly, thank you so much for everything you did this year. I mean, what an incredible year to be on the other end of this when I thought we would never get here. Your leadership, um, we were just that, we were a leading district and that, that is because of you and your team that you've put in place. And, um, as a, as a parent, I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Which means a lot and, and, um, I, I, I have the best darned team around.
Dude, they're awesome.
They're just awesome. And you guys, especially Kathleen, who goes to some of the state meetings with me in the past. We all know it can be contentious. We agree and disagree, I think, in a way that's respectful. And I think that's one of the reasons why I continue to stay here. Uh, money is always important, but lifestyle is more important. So I thank the committee very much for your support.
And I think that just goes to show how far we've come too. Is, is, is the, the communication and the camaraderie that we have is, and that's what makes it work.
For sure.
Bless you.
What, she sneezed?
I'm so easy, I'm touching moment.
She's getting choked up.
Apologize.
Uh, okay, I would, I entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's contract revision for 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mr. Sabas is yes.
Thank you. I'll send along to you, so.
Uh, next up, we have the superintendent conflict of interest disclosure for extended school year.
As you know, my family, um, pretty much lives in one, even though we don't have an address. But as you also know, ethics is something that's important to me. And this can always be done in many different ways, but I, I've always chosen that the best way to do this is to do it in a public meeting on the, on the docket, um, for any clarification. So I'm asking to, please accept this memo as notification to you, the North School Committee and the Town of Norton, that my daughter, Margaret White, a student in Norton High School, who is a school choice student, has been recommended by Fitz and Sarah, Sarah's director of people personnel services in Conchans and Russo, special education coordinator, to be hired at the rate of $13.25 per hour as a student assistant in the extended school year program. Program runs from July 6th to August 5th, Tuesday through Thursday, from 7:45 to 12:15 p.m. Set information and request for school committee vote is being made under the conflict of interest law since she is my daughter under Massachusetts general laws, chapter 268A. This will be entered into the record with a positive vote of the committee.
Do you have any questions or comments on it?
The total is under a thousand dollars for the entire summer.
Okay.
Um, good luck to her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know Maggie a little bit, Mrs. Stern isn't a very, very nice person, conscientious, so I, I don't.
She's a two pretty good parents.
Yeah. Uh, and we need to vote this gentleman.
Yes, let's vote it.
Um, how do we word this, uh, motion to?
Accept the conflict of interest exposure, uh, disclosure as presented.
Okay, uh, motion to accept the conflict of interest disclosure as accept, uh, as written, sorry.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mr. Sabas, yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we got the FY '21 summer transfers. Mr. Wells.
Hi, everybody. Uh, so this is our annual request, uh, as we close out the fiscal year. We're going to have to make some transfers, but they're going to be after July 1st, um, but they're going to count for this fiscal year. And we're just requesting the ability to make those transfers so that we can close out the year.
Questions? Thank you to Mr. Wells, who is on vacation today, um, but is zooming in to get this done. That's the reason why he's getting back to his hat, I believe.
Comment, but I'm not all that spiffily dressed, dude.
Full time, Matt, I thought you were awake because of the baseball hat. Did you see his face and I couldn't read the name? I thought you were awake because you, you had a different hat on.
Yeah, I was, I was going to put a suit on, but I figured, well, it's just kind of hot.
Yeah, you're on vacation. I appreciate it.
It does require a vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the, um, the FY '21 summer transfers. Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mr. Sabas is yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the, uh, okay, you can sign off and go back on vacation. Uh, next up, we have the end of the year report, Dr. Leia.
Thank you. I'm not going to go through this and read it all, it is for public record. But as you know, a few years ago, I started this whole idea of just having us take some bullied items that we feel proud of as an overall district, coming through the work of many people under teaching and learning, my office, um, the PPS office, the special aid office, that instructional technology office, business transportation services and of course, facilities. I, I'm going to tell you that there's a lot of good things that are happening that we're proud of. Um, but I, I, I also want to go on the docket to say that the number one headache that is out there right now has been our, our response in Norton in a positive way to teaching and learning to the best that we could, but also our facilities, um, you know, that we really handled the A-Track issues that were a problem that have caused us not to be open and so on and so forth. So kudos to the men and women under Wade's Department for getting that done. We continue to clean at, at a high level. We haven't changed, uh, so far this year. Um, teaching and learning, which is the most important thing that we do, um, I would probably say in some ways was probably number two this year Um, teaching and learning, which is the most important thing that we do, um, I would probably say in some ways was probably number two this year, because safety was always the number one thing that we were concerned on. But to Jen's office and her team of people trying to come together and just do a lot of new things like the D L A and all of that that needed to be put together, all of that under the labor management committee and the and the work of five, uh, four teachers, one paraprofessional, and and three administrators. Um, I I think the month of May, it's pretty much been the only month we haven't met, uh, we've been meeting forever. And then, um, really trying to get us down to the core of what happened. Remember that we've done two graduations this school, this calendar year, right, this this school calendar year, if you will. We did one in July for the class of twenty-one, we did one for the class of twenty-two the other day that, um, I thought was pretty awesome, especially the kids' speeches, the the students' speeches to me are always the best, Sabas' is a little long.
Why do you think I left?
You left at a perfect time. Um, and they always have kind of the same theme, I've noticed when he's cheer.
Always seems like I don't want to talk.
And then I think the the other part is how we we came back as as fast as we could with our specialized population. So kudos to Viddy and and Casey and all of the people, and I think there were our multiple people, including a group of people that sometimes don't get recognized, and that's our paraprofessionals, right, the people that are in the trenches with the kids. So our staff, and what by staff, I mean anybody that's connected to teaching and learning in any way, um, what a fantastic job, and and I'll finish later on uh, under other business, like, thank you to some of the folks as well, so that's for you, or if you need anything to refer.
I I just wanted to add that having seen the Leslie University Trauma Institute um program down on the Cape, um, I'm I'm so proud that we have embraced that and we're still carrying on with it, it's just such a fantastic program, and teachers can look at it on their own, um, you know, when they can, and and I just think it's a phenomenal program. And it really gives insight, you you think you know until you see something like that, and then it 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 gives you a different insight. So I'm I'm proud that we're still part of that program.
I see. Yeah, very rude, I was gonna say, so I when I looked at the list, and it was a longer list of stuff, and I don't say that, I, um, my my thought was originally to try and highlight a couple of things.
Yeah.
Um, and I decided not to do that, because there were so many good things on there, and that to highlight one or two would be unfair to the other.
Yeah, I agree.
It's it's a it's a comprehensive list, it's a, it's a lot.
When you, when you look at how we just shifted in March, you know, I, just everybody, you know, the the technology, the technicians, you know, the Paul, the Nixon, and 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 John, and Karen, and how they would just outside, pick up your your one-to-one stuff, I mean, it's just been a crazy
Yeah.
year, and I'm I'm just really, I'm just, thank you, thank you, thank you, that's all I can say, I'll leave it at that.
So, Joe, I just want to say too, like, you know, what I said to you, I think I just, it's worth mentioning now to any teachers who are listening, but, you know, just our admin staff, um, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our, you know, our, um, you know, people in the front offices, our nurses, custodians, I mean, everybody from top to bottom this year, just thank you from the bottom of our heart. I mean, without you guys, we never would have made it through this year. I mean, not only for our kids' sake, but also for us, right? There were many times that we were just done and at our wits' end, and, you know, somebody would come in with something that they did that would kind of give us that little boost to kind of still continue through this pandemic, and, um, I just want to publicly thank our entire staff in Norton. Without you guys, this is impossible, and, um, just thank you so much.
Right, and and I hate to keep keep it going, but I will, um, I I want to thank the parents too, because, you know, I know this is a frustrating year. I mean, you know that things didn't always go perfectly, they never do, um, but but by and large, most of our our parents were understanding. Um, they they allowed the district, Joe, and his team, teachers, and everybody in the schools to do their jobs. And in the end, I I honestly, I feel like, given the circumstances, we did a a really good job. Um, yeah, I, my my hat's off to, my hat's off to this town, like, this town, every once in a while, they they remind me why I why I love living here, why why I want to be here, so, um, and and the the way that this was handled, both internally and externally, that's that's what it's all about, you know? The 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 food services guys out there helping out people, and there's there's a million, like I said, there's a longer list of things you can say, um, that are positive. And and I don't want to give short trip to anything, but but just kudos to everybody.
Yeah, I think the parents too, trusting us to make some really hard decisions this year that we never wanted to make.
Right.
I think that the the people in town, that they may not agree with us at first, because it was a scary, scary time, you know, it's nice to know that, um, you know, there was trust, and and like I said, from one of those first meetings last summer, the kindness, there was a lot of kindness this year, and I hope that we can continue that as a town.
Right, and in a lot of cases, it was the least bad choice, it wasn't make a good choice, it was the least bad choice.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's that's what happens sometimes, so, uh, anyways, that's my my two cents. Um, next up is our, any other comments or questions? Uh, next up is the personnel update.
Thank you, you have a list of our staff, uh, and I won't read every single person here, but I I just want to first of all thank our digital learning academy staff who really came to us in many cases, even into September. Um, but I just want to thank those folks, as far as California, who worked with our students online, and it wasn't always perfect, and we know that, and there were a lot of hiccups that we had to deal with, but I really want to thank all of those folks that went from from being all on medical, moving into the F M L A, uh, F M L A, and then became remote, two of those people that actually became part of our culture. Um, so thank you to all of them, um, you've made it work, we thank you. We we, I I want to say, I, you know, I really want to get to know some of you, because again, some of these people I really didn't even meet, if you will, except for me as soon to, except for. Um, we have added, not added new positions, but brought up on ten people already. Um, so this is a really lists, uh, we probably have these numbers, we've been very aggressive in the hiring process. Um, I want to, uh, say thank you to those that are, uh, choosing to resign because of personal matters, or moving to another state, or moving to another situation. Um, and I want to take a minute, if you would indulge me, to thank our staff that's retiring. Um, we have a hundred and eighteen years of service, uh, to the Norton Public Schools, and some of these people did years upon years with other districts as well. Um, so the service is of a hundred and eighteen years, um, of these folks. Um, Rita Bolton, twelve years as the J C S principal, Allison Boylan, our L G N occupational therapist, nineteen years. Uh, Richard Godmans, our high school English teacher, he'll be in September, but I'd like to just put it out there tonight as well, eighteen years, we'll recognize him a little more formally later. Lori Hastings, our kindergarten teacher at the J C S for twenty years, Laura Hoy, our Norton High School teacher, chairperson for sixteen years. And lastly, but not least, the veteran of the hall, who spent thirty-three of her thirty-five years in public education. Uh, Ms. Mary Taylor, Norton High School math teacher and academic coordinator, thirty-three years to Norton Public Schools for so long time.
Yeah.
Number one's man, and I, it's my understanding she's still got at least volleyball and basketball scoring that she's going to be doing next year that she's committed to. Um, and I know that that, uh, some of you know that Mary at times has had some health issues, and she's in, she's battling, she's doing it. Um, she has never wavered, and, um, she's someone that I have tremendous respect for as well. So thank you to all of them for their hundred and eighteen years of service, there will be a small little recognition there on behalf of the school committee and the Norton Public Schools, besides the traditional, we're adding a little something special this year, um, to each as well. And then lastly, um, please come and visit, um, and if you don't mind making ninety or a hundred dollars a day, come and sub, thank you.
Can I ask, um, how does it work for a retirement that happens sort of in September? So they they come to?
Yeah, so there's.
For the first twenty days?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a couple of different ways that work, it says things in their contract that they can utilize, right, in terms of, um, personal days and that type of thing. And then in a lot of ways, what we've tried to do is we're trying to make it a one-to-one discussion, usually between my office and Jen's office, with the teacher about, listen, we're not going to put you into the classroom right away or at all, but what we're going to do is give you, what would you like to do? Right, and allow for that transition to take place, if it's later in the year, it's fine, but if it's in September, you know, we we're hiring somebody right away, uh, we're taking care of that, um, and then we try to do it, we've had teachers do projects in curriculum instruction office, we've had people at my office, and we've had people who wanted to work in the building, and what they did is they kind of just supported the building in the way that they could. So we kind of, we want it, we want people to go out the way that, I mean, it's comfortable for them, but also good for kids and us, so, um, that that'll be the approach.
Yeah, I mean, it's not the worst thing to have a couple of extra bodies at school, start something.
No, not at all.
Now, do we, do you want, do we have positions we still need to fill, do you want, do you think everyone will?
Um, I don't have the list before, I can tell you that we hired a team chairperson at the high school, and now we're looking for a team chairperson at the high school. Person resigns and take a different job, so except there's no anxiety, it was great. Um, but we're we're still looking, for example, for the math position, the team chair position, uh, the English teacher position, those positions, as an example, are still all out. Going through that process, recommendations should be coming in the next, as soon as before even we get out of school, is where I'm here.
All right, uh, before we go to our other businesses, I just a quick shout out to our graduated seniors.
Yes.
A great, uh, great graduation ceremony on Saturday, um, and I think I said that day, day was a little warm if you were in a suit, but, uh, but by and large, couldn't really ask for a better day.
I'm not sure it was any, um, any cooler last year.
Yeah, I I think last year was hotter, but it was.
Yeah, I see that last year, we kind of, um, we were.
I'm glad we did it when we did it, and I know that it was at least one or two folks that were concerned about it, but the fact that matters, I think five-thirty would have been optimal.
It would have been, yeah.
And so, um, I think next year we'll be a little bit more firm, another lesson learned, but we'll.
I think it was great, I think recognizing students is so important, so.
Yeah, so shout out to all of them, um, we wish you well in your future endeavors in life, and as Joseph, Mary, come back and visit us. All right, uh, last on our list is other business topics.
I have a number for you, please, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Norton High School received a generous donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars to help cover the costs of senior obligations for those students or families who need and adversely affected by the pandemic. The donation was made in loving memory of Mary Amelia Schwartz, who left fourth grade to begin supporting her family, and whose great-granddaughter is part of the class of twenty twenty-one, so thank you to that family for their generous donation, which did in fact help the students in the graduating classes. So very generous. Um, I just want to share with you, and I gave you copies, yours, this is always my one of mine, this is so professionally done. So, uh, in in the front cover, I just wanted to recognize, um, the faculty advisor, Ms. Christine Fay, the student editor, Rihanna Kehon, and Ashley Johnson, the student editors, Morgan Casca, Julia Kida, Lucas Vee, and Grace Souza. Um, and then of course, the support of not only you and and my office and all of that, but, um, this is really well done. And on page three is the dedication, we did share copies with the Norton Police Department and the DeFosses family. Um, the, uh, spring twenty twenty-one purple pages, Norton High School Little Red Magazine, um, is hereby dedicated in loving memory of Detective Sergeant Stephen Hart DeFosses. So, uh, this are really interesting reads and poems, and, um, I'm I'm thankful, I've already started reading it, I always read them, it's, it becomes kind of like my summer reading. And on page twenty-eight, uh, Lulu, my dog, is present. I'll share with Lulu as well, so thank you for that, please save some time. Um, there's some really interesting reads, um, and things that inspire people. The next one is, um, this morning, myself, Mr. Cersei, the middle of the high school administration, General Neal, uh, went to the, uh, Underclassman Award Ceremony, um, I've provided you the list of all of the students, um, so, um, you'll know some of the names that that are on here, and I guess it's a proud dad, I can say my kid is on here too. Um, but, uh, really always a nice, uh, this year was, because it was indoors and everything else, we we've stuck, we've scheduled this stuff, it's always weeks and one ahead of time, so it was just students. Um, so we made sure that we as administrators were also here, so this is just a list for you to see, I congratulate, uh, congratulations to all of those students. And it was taped for cable, yes, so it will be on cable for those. Um, just wanted to, it's, Mr. Sabas has it, but you were recognized as a committee, uh, for the Magner Award, that will be posted at Central Office, you've already seen that, but they did in fact send us the plaque, uh, thank you to that. Uh, special announcement, on behalf of the, um, Greater Adorable Relay for Life, which has held at Norton High School for the last few years, yeah, it's from, uh, it is, uh, drive-through experience and luminarious stroll on the track, Saturday, June nineteenth, six to nine, yeah, again, Norton High School, Saturday, June nineteenth, six to nine P M, very different process for the Greater Adorable Relay for Life that just came in this afternoon, um, as well. As much as I appreciate the chair and congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-one, welcome to the new senior class, the class of twenty twenty-two. Um, thank you for everything you guys I know that be doing, we're already talking about, um, trying to have some normalcy. First tweet I sent out to them was, let's let's get back on that boat, and do I see your crews? Um, looking forward to that, um, as well, um, the kids have been great. And then lastly, um, two items, one, uh, the joint conference, if you're interested in attending, um, let me know, more information.
My last one.
Will, uh, happen, so we'll talk if you're interested. And then just my typical end of year closing, uh, statement. And I decided to write it this way, so that I'm short, brief, and to the point, since I talk too much as it is. Um, as we come to the end of a very different year of schooling and education, I want necessarily to thank the Norton School Committee, my entire administration team, the support staff, and the employees of Norton Public Schools, all of them. The stress has been high, but the laughs have made it easier on certain days. Moreover, you allowed me the opportunity to fight a good fight on behalf of Norton Public Schools, while at the same time striving to do good things for children. That is the reason why Norton. Many of you know that that was a theme at graduation. At the class of twenty twenty-one graduation this past week, I spoke about a story about potatoes, eggs, and coffee beans. For those in attendance, N P S, N P S is the coffee bean. We took on the adversity, the challenges, and although not perfect, we came out on top. We are in the people business, and this year I am proud to have led this district in just doing that. Stand up, stand tall, and note each time as a student, as a paraprofessional, as a teacher, as an administrative assistant, as a custodian, as a food services employee, as an administrator, or as a bus driver, that you are Norton Public Schools' home of the Lancer, Lancer Nation. Thank you, and have a wonderful and safe, great summer, see you in the fall.
Nicely done, yeah, that's great. I just have one question, just because I drive by it all the time, um, the L G Norris Playground, when they were putting in the solar panels, was there some kind of discussion about them?
Yes, and that just hasn't come through for for wishing it, but yes, those are discussions that are still.
So it's still happening?
Uh, as far as we know, it's still happening. The debate there had to do with the intriguing contract. Um, if you remember, it was, it's twenty thousand dollars a year to the town.
Right.
And the intent was a separate twenty thousand to the school department for the purposes of the upgrades.
Okay.
Now, the debate is, is that twenty thousand, the original twenty thousand or an extra twenty thousand? So those, we have not, the school department has not forgotten those discussions and will bring it up, um, in the time.
I I don't know why I thought that it was happening when the, um, construction of the whole thing was happening, so I guess I just misunderstood.
Yeah, and they're not done over there yet, but they have been, um, the kids are frustrated about it, because they're watching, at one point, I was in Jerusalem York's class, and they're they're talking about the type of machines and how they look like dinosaurs and all kinds of things. I mean, you know how to create a mind, so, but yes, we have not forgotten that.
Okay.
All right, does anybody have anything else? No? Okay, um, at this point, I don't believe we have set another meeting in this night, we're.
You are scheduled for September, um, we may need, um, uh, a some, a quick summer one for the purposes of handle, if we always leave that one out there, or any other return to school items that the common office is requiring us to do, we are going to have to have written reopening plans again and all of that, but, um, you know, we're only not a week of meetings. You know, no, I I don't anticipate us having to be in in, uh, in, you know, July and August like we did last year, as you may recall.
I don't anticipate that either.
Yeah.
I feel like a student, like, this is that, like, I'm waiting for the bell to ring, and I'm like, yes, we made it, we're done, okay.
Okay, um, I have a bunch of stuff I want to talk about.
Oh, no, you don't.
Catherine, did you go?
I did.
She's getting them to leave again.
I have time again.
All right, votes are adjourned at seven oh nine, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Miss Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. She?
Yes.
Mr. Sabas?
Four hundred and ten.
Great summer, great summer. For those of you who are, obviously all of you, but.
Yep, so, um.